Mr. Lewis, he was coming. He was leaving the hospital and they were thanking him. He wanted to say he won't be joining us this season. But he sends his apology and I'm going to sit in the locker room with his family and pray. That was it. You're ready?
Well, thank you, sir. We'd like to welcome everyone that's here with a person and that's on and is online tonight. And with that said, it is my honor to invite four of Mr. Terry Stewart from the Blair School Church of Christ. The education, please rise.
Thank you. Let's pray again. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful holiday, for the gift of life, Father, that you have given to us. We know that your word tells us that it is through your son, Jesus, through you that we live and move and add our very being, Father. So we thank you. Father, as we begin this meeting, we ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support. As this meeting starts, we pray that you would be with this school board, Father, today and always, Father. Shannon Miller, as she is the Chief Executive Officer of the schools, her assistants, Father, principals, and those who are in positions of leadership, Father, all the way down to those who are in custodial care, those who feed the children, those who drive the buses, Father. It truly does take a village, and we thank you, Lord. Our wonderful nation has her blessings and her successes. Father, we know that we are not a favored nation. We are one of many. The God beauty of this great nation is, is in our education system, Father. We seek to educate all of it. And God, we thank you for teachers, for support staff, for bear probes, for those in the classroom, Father, for those who have daily interactions with students and children. Father, we thank you for the opportunity. It is a calling, Lord. What you give to us, Father, in our talents and our gifts, they come from you. Father, whether we recognize Christendom or not, we know that you have given to us certain abilities and gifts through your son, our Savior, Jesus Christ, to be able to change our world. Father, now our hearts are mindful of those in the Gaza region, the nation of Israel. And Father, I pray that for those of us who profess Christianity, that we would be patient with those who don't, that we would be loving with those who don't, and that we would seek, Father, to be the light of Jesus. Father, that sounds very, very ethereal and almost, Father, pie in the sky. But God, I pray that you would help us as Christians to walk our faith, to be a little kinder, to be a little more respectful, Father, to be the difference in the world. Father, bless this meeting again, we ask. Thank you for this opportunity to call upon the God of heaven, that you would, that you would hear us, and that you would lend your spirit, your support, and your guidance. And again, Father, bless all those who are here, those who are not in attendance, Stevens, Father, and all of those who make such a difference in the education of our young people. In Jesus' name we pray. Thank you.
Come on in.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to invite up the conning headboard. Attention, solely pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, and our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may leave. Mr. Chair. I'd like to do out of agenda number four, please, to approve this agenda. Ms. Tipton, if you'll help us with that. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a recognition to approve this present.
We have a recommendation of your motion.
So move.
Your motion approved. So Jim, that's presented. Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Motion for the second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Don't you nans, don't you care.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is something to celebrate, and I'm extremely excited. So I'd like to invite Chief Academic Officer Dr. Lucas Ruth forward to discuss the 2023 GSBA Exemplary Board Status. Correct me.
Absolutely. So, gentlemen, as you know, a lot goes into this, this stats, this opportunity for you guys for the Board of Education. And so GSBA, there are multiple levels, multiple tiers, and exemplary is the best tier that you could be at. That's the highest tier for our board. And so I just want to tell you guys congratulations, and that this is something to celebrate. Here is the press release. This is just to show the logo, and we also have a certificate that we will come out right now.
Yes, yeah.
All right. So this, as the press release says, it's a recognition program. I know that this is a multiple years. We've run this for several years in a row, and it's something, again, to be extremely shown and proud of. And you gentlemen should definitely be honored to continue to receive this exemplary board status.
And this isn't a requirement by any stretch of imagination. You all choose to participate in this and to attend sessions and continue to learn what it means to assist and lead school districts with each other. And you are always jolly on the spot and ready to do what it takes and to learn all the new stuff. And I want to thank you for that. You are appreciated. I hear stories from around the state, and I can say we are blessed.
Absolutely. And also, just before I forget, the trophy plaque, if you will, similar to the one that sits in the corner, that will come in December. We want to go ahead and let you all know that you received it so that we can, you know, get the information out there, get the press release out there, and we have the certificate to vote for.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis, for helping to facilitate that program. We appreciate it. And it's always a joy to participate in training sessions.
Thank you. Y'all come around and let's just get a smiling photo for the board.
You have one of those up. When I hear.
I got you. Thank you. Thank you for all the. Yes, the big state quarter. Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is more celebration. So it is last year. Now the item number six on an agenda, and it's all reason to celebrate. With that said, Dr. Lucas Ruth is going to present the Cognit 25 Years of Excellence Awards. To Dr. Ruth.
Absolutely. So when we have here, all three of our elementary schools received the Cognit 25 Years of Excellence Award. So Cognit, representatives from Cognit showed up their elementary schools. We actually didn't even know they were coming, and they surprised us with these awards. And so we were thinking, okay, why the elementary schools? You know, what happened to the middle school and high school? So on further research, it's not that our middle school and high school were left out. They're on a different timeframe. So our elementary schools were first accredited in 1998.
And it was, what was the name of the accreditation at that point?
So that's your SACS accreditation here. And so then moved to Advanced Standard and now Cognit. So the first SACS accreditation that our elementary schools received was in 1998. And that's because SACS first began accrediting high schools, only high schools. Then they moved to middle schools, and then finally elementary schools. So 1998, again, is when our elementary schools were first accredited through SACS and now Cognit. And that's why they're receiving this 25 years of excellence accreditation. Our middle school was, or the first time that a middle school in Vannan County was accredited was in 1977. So their next milestone will be the 50-year mark in 2027. The first time that we had a high school accredited in Vannan County was in 1934. So the next milestone for our high school, for our high school now, will be in 2034, and that will be the 100-year milestone. So, you know, not only do our elementary schools deserve applause, I feel like approaching those numbers for middle school and high school, I think they all deserve round of applause for sure. So absolutely. So with that said.
Yes. Well, we did a little research, not just with the numbers, and then excellent is a hard thing to achieve, but they have maintained it. And I'm so proud of our schools, and I'm proud of our history. But for 25 years, we did a little research, and we wanted to speak to the principals for the elementary schools' work over those 25 years. So at Lurdes Elementary, that would be Mark Hinson, Rhonda Payne, Shannon Miller, Dr. April Hodges, and Mark Young. For East Vannan Elementary, Cynthia Painter, Dr. Michael Watney, Bonnie Angel, Cindy Diggs, Sarah Riebden, and Maggie Price. And West Vannan Elementary, David Crawford, Glenn Patterson, Karen Walton, Robert Ginsley, Lucas Ruth, and Allison Nader. So it was fun looking up that history and just realizing that we don't do anything in isolation of what we have built on, you know, each year, on the past successes of those that come before us. And I hope that we continue to do that tradition. So with that said, Dr. Ruth will give the current rock stars that's doing the hard work to come down.
Absolutely. Elementary school principals, please bring your 25 years of Cognit Excellence with you. Those flags that I continuously send you text messages for you not to forget to bring.
Right. And more importantly, bring their flags. If we can go around the front, so you can have your photo. Not a wasted clock. I've barely lived 25 years. No pressure. Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is to improve our district vision, mission, and beliefs. And I think most of those experiences that we've had already, this meeting will show that we are true to trying to support that vision, mission, and belief. Dr. Ruth?
Absolutely. Gentlemen, these, the vision, the mission, the beliefs, as you know, all of these were provided to you ahead of time for you to review and then go over. And at this time, when it comes to the vision, the mission, and the belief statements, we do ask for your approval. I will say that these have been embedded through our district and school improvement team. We spent essentially the entire last year, starting in last September, October, all the way to now, to analyze these, think carefully about them, and make sure that they truly fit what we're trying to accomplish in our school system. And so with that said, these do come to you at this time to honestly ask for your approval.
With that said, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve this presented.
Do you have a recommendation, Mr. Motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have motion to second to approve the belief statement and the mission statement. Any discussion? All those in favor? Don't you nans, don't you care.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our 2023-2024 strategic plan, how we're going to get to accomplish that mission and vision. Dr. Ruth?
Absolutely. And the same process, similar to the vision, the mission, and the beliefs. When it comes to the entire strategic plan, this entire plan was also embedded by our district and school improvement team, all the members of that team, and carefully analyzed and carefully reviewed, again, to make sure it's truly capturing the goals that we feel like we want to have along with those action steps. So Ms. Tipton, there we go. So strategic goal one, I'm not going to redo every single action step. Again, as you gentlemen know, this was provided to you in advance for you to review ahead of time. Strategic goal one, though, is attaining a high level of student achievement. Strategic goal two, to develop organizational effectiveness. And strategic goal three, ensuring stakeholders support and satisfaction. So with that said, again, knowing that you had the opportunity to review in advance, and with this document, carefully analyzed by our district and school improvement team, we again come to you to ask for approval of the strategic plan.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, can I make a recommendation to approve this presented?
A recommendation to approve the strategic plan. Do I have your motion? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Don't you nans, motion approved.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is school government's team update, excuse me, Dr. Lucas Ruth?
Absolutely. So we, at Lurdes Elementary, we have a meeting September 14th. And again, these are all the meetings that took place in between the previous board meeting, that made it onto the document, the previous board meeting, and now this board meeting. So Lurdes Elementary met on September 14th, had two field trip requests, and there's notable work that took place at Lurdes Elementary. They had Title I, II, and IV budgets approved, and then discussed, you know, many important topics there at their SGT. East Vannan fundraiser request, they had those, three of those approved. And then also Title I was approved at this meeting. Lots of discussions took place, as you can see. And then they also had a call meeting on September 20th, where Mr. Price came back and led the meeting to approve their Title I and their Title IV budget, and also have another fundraiser request that was approved. West Vannan had three field trip requests, this was on September 19th, and lots of discussion. Also, Mr. Ben took time to make sure the Title I, Title II, and Title IV budgets all were approved. Middle school, you know, now we had middle school and high school, one more fundraiser and field trip requests, lots of fundraiser requests there, several field trip requests. Also, Dr. Hodges there assured that those budgets, Title I, Title II, Title IV, Title V, all those budgets were approved by SGT. And then moving on to high school, several fundraiser requests, several field trip requests, and several facility use requests. As you can see, that high school, SGT remains very busy even on the day of the meetings. And Dr. Randy assured that his federal budgets were approved, Title II, Title IV, and Title V, all approved along with other discussion. Aside from that, just a quick item to go over here. Overall, at this point, we'd simply thank all SGTs have the opportunity to provide feedback, carefully talk to their constituents at the school level inside of those communities. And all five SGTs are highly interested in that process of having a cyclic bank for our school system.
So they're interested in for students to review the different policies and see the impact on our school system.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So that's just, again, wanting to give them the opportunity to have a voice there and be able to have a voice inside the school community, for each school.
Thank you, Dr. Ruth.
And just a reminder that the men's for SGT are housed in this school.
Thank you, sir.
If I can interject for a moment, I know that our principals provide leadership on the school governance teams. I want to thank you for that, and also to thank all the members of the school governance teams on the work that they do. All of those items that we just went through, the board used to have to consider and vote on and approve, we'd be here all night. So I'm very, very thankful for the work that they do and for another school meeting. Remembering the school team, the community. So thankful for the school governance teams and those school leaders.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, I would like to invite four Director of Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Heather Collins, to give us that simple update on where we're headed in the curriculum world.
All right. We are here to provide a brief presentation, and I say brief, but we'll keep it classy, a presentation of curriculum, student learning, and professional learning. Just to remind, of course, the vision that was actually just approved, you know, that our system does hold a vision of excellence for all students with a successful progression at each level and 100% graduation rate. So when we look at that vision, when we take that vision and apply it to our side of the world with curriculum instruction, we're talking about investing in every child, every day, to try to make sure that that student gets the best possible outcome that that student can have, put that student in the best possible position to be successful, whatever that looks like for that particular student. And I will turn the mic over and we'll share this presentation. But I want also, just, I feel very blessed to work with the people that I work with when it comes to Dr. Bob, when it comes to Mrs. Tipton, and when it comes to Mrs. Collins. And I say that, I just can't say enough about them. They're all certainly our workers and just wonderful people.
Thank you. I'm excited to get to talk to you. Slightly nervous, but excited. One thing that we made a goal was to make sure that we were in every classroom and we had conversations with every teacher. And I can stand before you and say that we accomplished that goal between the two of us. We have been in every classroom, we had conversations with every teacher in the entire district, because we want to get a pulse on where they are with everything. And one of the points of conversation that we had was, how do you define success? Because the state's telling us how they define success, but how do you define it? And what we learned across the board from every teacher was that success was individualized for each student. And that they thread the needle throughout all of it was growth, improvement, that students learned while they were with them. And it showed that was success. So then that led us into more conversations about how you measure that, which of course leads to assessment. And we're not driven by assessment. We're driven by setting our students up to be successful. But part of that is a major form of our assessments, because that makes them feel better and sets them up in a better position. So as we had these conversations, we've been very careful to focus on student learning and student success, and to make everything centered around our students. And when you do that, you appeal to a teacher's heart, because they love good kids. And so as we've had these conversations, and we've talked about success, and we've talked about how to define it, how to measure it, we realized that we have to look at two things. We have to look at hard data, we have to look at soft data.
That's right. When I say qualitative data, and we, you know, we look at that, we analyze it carefully, data over the past years, longitudinal data, and then also, yes, looking at that qualitative data, getting to those classrooms, talking to teachers. And what we realized, looking at conclusions from that, from that data analysis, three major components. One is to have a reset of standard-based learning. When we say learning, not instruction, because learning is student-centered. And so, you know, to have a reset there. And that's, you know, our classroom standards, just making sure that all the teachers truly, truly understand the classroom standards that they're teaching. You know, there's content weights. So when I say that, I'm talking about the content weights on the Georgia Milestones, for instance, making sure that the amount of time spent in the classroom matches up with the content weights on those assessments, and also depth of knowledge. So that's, you know, looking at, if we're looking at the assessment, like the Georgia Milestones, where the student can score a level one, level two, level four, to get those level three and level four results, you have to have that knowledge, level three and four, in the classroom to get those results. And I say all that, you know, talked about the test a few times there. We're not saying that we're focused on the test, because all we care about is the test. We're saying that we know that our teachers are working extremely hard, harder than any teacher's done. And we know that our students are working extremely hard, extremely hard. We want to make sure that that hard work, that level of hard work, matches exactly with what happens with the outcomes of the standardized test. We want it to match. And so that way, if it matched, and that hard work matches the results, that gives our teachers an opportunity to celebrate. That gives our students an opportunity to celebrate. So again, it's not that we necessarily make the test to end all the deal. We just want that opportunity for teachers to celebrate and kids to celebrate. And so that's why we definitely focus on those three things mentioned there.
So we've asked teachers to do two things differently. We've not asked them to overturn the entire apple cart, and we've not asked them to throw off the baby with the bathwater. Except there are two things that we think we can get a big impact from, if we just do them a little differently. One of those things is how we use our data. Teachers are notorious to look at last year's test data and beat themselves up over anything that they think they know about to change what they're doing based on this results from last year. And then they get this year's kids, and they aren't last year's kids, and they're having to re-group again. So what we're going to do is we're going to start getting data to our teachers early for the kids that they're going to have next, and start working on getting data to them sooner, so that they can look at the data for the kids who are sitting in their rooms, or who are going to be sitting in their rooms. That's going to capitalize on a lot of time. And the other thing that we ask them to do is this big fancy educational work on differentiation. But what it really means is you do what's best for that kid. You give that kid what that kid needs. If it's something that you already went over with the entire class, and most of them have it, and that kid doesn't solve that time, go back and make sure they get it. It's okay to do that. We're not worried about covering content. We're worried about teaching the students, getting each student what they need. And that appeals to a teacher's heart. So what we've done in an effort to get this ball rolling is I've been in every school, and I've sat down with the teachers, and we've had these conversations. We've made sure that we are all on the same page, and we all believe in the same direction that we're heading. we're heading, and we've looked at their data, we've conducted some observations, and then there's some amazing professional learning that is set up for these teachers right now, and that is all thanks to Dr. Connie Kev. She has laid the groundwork for this, she started this last year, and the results that you're going to see are a result of years of work that's gone into this, that she has some amazing professional learning set up for our teachers this year, and we're going to go back, we're going to refocus on those three things.
All right, so the previous slide showed the professional learning, again, no reason to stand, there's all those, again, we'd be here all night, like you were talking about, but we do have amazing professional learning lined up. How do we get there? That's the next focus. And one thing we know that we really have to do, starting now, and we've already had conversations with our kindergarten teachers and first grade teachers, we'll continue to have those conversations at each level, is find that balance between teacher ownership and what are the non-negotiables. So for instance, we know that teachers crave the ability to be creative with how they approach certain standards in their classroom. They want that time, they want that ownership. At the same time, though, we know that there are certain things that we have to put in place, for instance, that all kindergarten teachers must give a paying council system, and all fourth grade teachers must give a paying council system, so on and so forth. So we want to really focus hard on finding that balance. Kindergarten, first grade teachers have already mentioned that the finance instruction, the phonetic awareness instruction that we brought to the table, that our academic coaches and Dr. Boggs brought to the table, they want to keep that as a non-negotiable. But we also have realized that, you know, there's different places, again, where we didn't allow our teachers to have some more ownership with some of the way that they approach their standards. And another item here is to commit to provide time and resources. Resources is not a, you know, that's not a problem for us. Time, of course, is a big, that's an issue anywhere you go, anywhere in the world, but we're committed to try to find time to carve out, to provide our teachers, continue to provide our teachers, we want more professional learning, that they know how to get better and better, and so we're committed to look creative ways to find that time.
And so as we dreamt and had visions about what the future curriculum is, and Pam County Dr. Ruth has done a very good job of keeping the also set on, okay, what are our goals? And what is our timeline for this? Because it's always dream big, then to fit, and actually enrodding, and to go somewhere with it. So we have come up with these goals, and I know you guys were provided with them earlier to review for this year, again, nutshell, by the end of the year, we're going to have mapped out the curriculum at each grade level. So no matter whose classroom you're in, no matter what school you're in, you're going to see similarities in all kindergarten classes, or in all first grade classes, that again, the things that are non-negotiable, the teachers have decided are key to what they're doing. And then we also addition that I have set some goals for the future.
Absolutely. And so goals for the future, and that's over the coming years, implementation of standardized learning, and that involves benchmarking, data analysis, and differentiated instruction, and to continue our data days, and to refine curriculum maps to accomplish all levels of learning. And so those curriculum maps, again, those are powerful, provide all kinds of opportunities for our teachers when it comes to instruction, and to refine benchmark assessment, use, and differentiated instruction at each level.
And just overall message that we want to hear everybody say in any company is that we teach stages. We don't teach standards, we don't teach a test, we teach people, we teach kids. And so hopefully that's going to be the feedback that you all are going to hear as well. Thank you.
Thank you. You all get an amen from me. And I'm extremely proud of this administrative team on the district leadership, that principals at schools, senior administrators support at your school, through the local schools. The ground ones, though, even when the rubber hits the road, in the classroom, with that classroom teacher. And the only reason we exist as administrators is to support them in their work, and to clear the runways so that they can do the real work that needs to be done. And I am blessed to say that every administrator that's in this room and knows about this school, share that belief, because you show up with your actions, and I just want to take a moment to say I appreciate you for that. Thank you.
Excuse me for this one, but you're in the other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next on the agenda is one of my favorite items that we have every month in the lesson this school happens, because now since the year until it's all happened, it's interesting.
Well, there are lots of exciting things going on at Westfana, and I just like, would like to let you know how much an honor it is for me to be able to send you guys the things that are going on at West. I would like to say, just as Ms. Norwood just said, that we get to stand up here and present to you guys all day long about the things that are going on, but who really needs to be here presenting to you are probably our students and our teachers, because they're the ones that put in the hard drive, that make these things happen. So we just want you guys to know that that's where the actual success is, as Ms. Norwood said. Well, that being said, we will get. Together, we're unlocking a world of possibilities, that's our focus at Westfana this year, and it was kind of, as I was sitting and listening to Ms. Collins and Dr. Ruth present, our work for the year was intentional, and we want to make sure that we are being intentional and getting to know each of our students, that we are recognizing our staff members and knowing their individual differences, and the things that they're going on, and what we can do to clear those paths for them, and then also getting to know our parents and our community that's surrounding our school, because without those three things, we're not going to be successful. So we sit back and we think, and I want to just, again, let our district know how much we appreciate, because I think above all years that I've been in administration, our teachers and our staff are truly feeling the intentionality of the things that are going on within the school, and that they are being heard, and that you guys are considering all the things that they're saying, and how much they appreciate that. So, thank you.
All right, so we have lots of new staff members this year, I feel like we hit the jackpot when we started to link, and yes, it's not often that you get to hire ten new faces to a staff. Actually, it was eleven, and we already lost one of those, but we're at ten. And how exciting it is to know that when you find that new candidate, you are successful at each of the hires that the board allows you to do. So we have this Amy Allen who came to us just from a neighboring county, and she's teaching first grade. We have this Jennifer Danner who's bringing to us a whole new perspective on the art world with her knowledge of that area. We have this Tiffany Herd who is not new to the Fannie County school system, she has played several roles, but has completed her teaching degree, and we're glad to have her as our great teacher. We have Mr. Andrew Glad, who was a Fannie County graduate, but was in a neighboring county and chose to come back to us. We have Mr. Raymond Mull and Ms. Caitlin Snyder. Ms. Caitlin Snyder was also a Fannie County alumni, who chose to come back to us. Ms. Bailey Stone. And then we have Mr. Tony Sirianni, Kristen Hunt, and Ms. Hannah White. When I look at these, you know, some of these people are actually called, so they're only their teachers, and that means that we don't call them, but it's okay. They're doing a great job, and we're very excited, a couple of them sometimes get confused with the kids, but that's okay, too. They're doing a phenomenal job, and I just can't write enough on them, that the energy they're bringing to the school, so. Again, one of those things that we really wanted to focus on is we want our teachers to know that they're appreciated, we want them to know that we want them to have fun. And so these are just a glimpse of some of the things that have gone on. One of our favorites is the rodeo, when the rodeo plan comes, so watch the teachers race. You wouldn't think that on those stick horses, that it's very competitive, don't let Miss Mills fool you, she was not going to lose. So, and then we also were able to have a lunch provided, one day we actually had hamburgers that Mr. Joyce laid over the grill, could he not have some hamburgers for everybody during pre-planning, so they didn't have to go out and get lunch, and we'd be kind of conservative, so we'd do our meeting during that. And then the rich community provided pigs and grubs for them all day at open house, so they didn't have to go out and have to come in their rooms. Again, just as Dr. Ruth and Ms. Collins had said, we have had an abundance of training for our teachers this year. It has been an amazing, again, I can't wait to see all of those things come to fruition. Our teachers are engaged, and they're willing to all the things that we have, really focusing on how we need to incorporate the foundations of reading in our lower grades, and the accordance both K one and two, and just implementing those foundations. So that's just a picture of some of our kids, or our teachers taking part in learning costs, teachers continuing to learn as well. The next picture is also, so over that, we were very fortunate to have the master gardeners came out. I think we've had our green house, Mr. Inslee, has it been ten plus years since we've had the green house? And we've had lots of transition at Westfana over the last ten years. And so a lot of our teachers were not familiar with how to operate the green house, so we wanted to make sure that we got that back on par. So this mutual setup, so that the master gardeners could come out, along with Ms. Rhonda from the ag department, and we could learn how to fully function with green house. So that's something that we're excited. And of course, we had Dr. Lynn hanging in some stuff with STEM process and STEM journal. Open house, that's when it all starts, that we begin to build that community with our parents, and let them understand that we are truly open to our policy, and that we want them in our building. Something that we've noticed, even as early as elementary, is that we continue to put technology into our kids' hands, it starts becoming too accessible for them, even as early as kindergarten, and they have free access to the things that they get on. And the scary part is, is that people are so smart now that they can trick kids into getting into these things on YouTube and programs that are supposed to be really simple. So we had, just Brian Buckington from Pioneer Reesters come and do a lesson on cybersecurity with our parents at open house, just to make them aware of some of the dangers that there were with kids being on technology. We also shared our Title I, and just to encourage people to take part in those events, we had door prices for those people that attended the two sessions. First day of school, oh my, that's the best part of being a teacher, seeing all those smiling faces on the first day of school, and just seeing that student engagement, watching them run in. I think Mr. Tracey Summers said it best, is when we watch kids get out of the car in the mornings, and they're actually running in the building, we're being successful, because they're excited about being there. So that's a great thing. Just making sure that the kids are having fun, it's not always about the standards. As Ms. Collins said, we want to make sure that those kids know that they're loved, and the school is a place to have fun. And we have to recognize, we want them to be there, and it's important for their attendance, and it's not always their fault they're not there, because they're not able enough to drive yet, so we have to recognize that. But we also know, if they're encouraged to be there by having fun, that they're going to push their parents to get them there every day. So we're giving random attendance awards where they can receive just random names. Say, okay, it's an attendance award today, everybody gets fifteen minutes of extra recess, or everybody gets a free popsicle, whatever. And I don't know when those days are coming, so hopefully that will encourage them to be there. Water days, snow cones, anything that we can do, just incorporate it, and make it fun for them. Just a glimpse of some of the activities that they get to do in specials, again, riding on, we've had lots of transition in those positions as well. New PE teacher, Ms. Glad is doing an amazing job with those kids, watching the kids skipping into school now, they're learning to skip, you wouldn't think that kids didn't know how to do that anymore, but there's so much of that technology stuff that a lot of kids don't know how to skip anymore. So, did have a picture of Miss Gory actually skipping with them, too, but I didn't put that one on there. So just watching them learn those things, along with learning about science tools and music, and having the older children come in and read to them in their classrooms, it's just enjoyable watching them grow, and all those things, as they have those experiences. Then we take them outside to experience outdoors. We have our frog bog, which is finally coming to fruition, it's been full-scale now, it actually has water running, filtering through first grade, that's one of their projects. They actually have put tadpoles in, and we have frogs now. We may have a lot of frogs, because there's lots of tadpoles in that pond. As you can see, there's this owl holding one cardinal group to escape to the playground from the frog bog, looking at the bees, and then our fifth grade class continuing to use the stream to do the water testing, just to see what impact all the development that's one on Highway Five is going to have to the water on Hattieville County. So lots of exciting things. Parent engagement, we are so fortunate with our parents at Westfana, and continuing to build those, I think our PTO was at an all-time high, the number of participants that we have in that. And they are really helping us to build those things. We've had volunteers, as you can see in all of these pictures, just making sure that we're reaching out to anybody that has a special skill that we can build on. So we continue to do that. Again, our PTO supports, who am I going to name this? Our PTO really supports us in having our mornings with moms and weekends with dads. This idea was brought to us by one of our parents a couple of years ago, and our PTO took it and kind of ran with it, and drew those, and our power hour, which I'll explain, we had over, what's we having today, over three hundred and fifty parents on campus since school began, participating in activities so that they can be on campus to see their kids during the school day. Our power hour is where parents can come in, we're at by grade level, they get to eat with their students, and then we pull them aside for ten or fifteen minutes, where they get to talk with the individual teachers about things that are going on in the classroom, and answer questions about curriculum or anything else that they may have. Family literacy night is always a big hit when we're doing our book fair. This year ours was unlocking a world of possibilities for reading, so each child received their passport, and they had to participate in certain events, and once their passport was complete, they received a label to participate in federal travel, so that was exciting. Again, just making sure that we reach outside our doors and build that community engagement. This is a screenshot of all the community partnerships that we have had throughout this school year, the Fannie County Company Library, Master Garden, what a resource they are for us, and they are willing to come in and do absolutely anything, from pouring concrete papers, to whatever they need to do. 4H, can't forget Clay, with the clown coming from the bus department, dogs of the American Revolution, Sons of the Revolution, the National Audigard, we are just so fortunate that we have that, and of course, our snake and backpack, because I can't tell you how many backpacks and how much food they deliver to our kids weekly, so that's amazing. And then we have Sploes, oh my, what transitions we have had at Westfana. So I think one of the biggest things that we had accomplished this year that looks amazing is, which we took a little history away, but we're going to make history on our own, and we had removed those leechers, because they were a little dangerous. So we had the concession stand and the leechers removed that were formerly there from when Westfana was a high school. That's memories for me, too, because I cheer on that field, so I get it, my dad played football in the field, but it was not safe anymore, so we have had that removed, and now that area is completely fenced in, it's beautiful, and it just provides us an area that our kids are able to be outside of, and they're safe. Without this loss, we would not have been able to do that. We're also able to fence that in, so coming down Damascus in the front, it is completely fenced in, secure, so the kids are safe in that area. Again, just to make sure that we're looking at renovations to the school, we had our floors redone in cafeteria, wow, what a change, that made, heard nothing but wonderful things about those. It looked, one of our students actually said it made our cafeteria much more appealing. But, and then we did some safety features that we don't care to go into detail about, because then we wouldn't But, um, and then we did some safety features that we don't care to go into detail about because they don't necessarily be safety features. So we have those. And then last but not least, we are honored to have Ms. Katie Robinson as the Fannie County School System Teacher of the Year. So Katie was actually in her first year of teaching, she took over my classroom. And I probably shouldn't say this, but at the time she was actually baby mom nephew as well. Um, so to watch her progress, she was my child's kindergarten teacher. So to watch her progress and to grow as she has is amazing. And I think one of our students said it best. Um, sometimes we think that our kids aren't able to really truly state what they have. But we had a student that wanted to show Ms. Robinson her appreciation and how deserved she was. So she wrote her letter and left it hanging on her door the next morning. So I was just going to read that. It says, Dear Ms. Robinson, I never had you as a teacher, but I know from friends that you are an amazing one. In first grade, I wanted you so bad, but I did not get you, I was so mad. Good job on getting teachered here, you deserve it. Um, this comes from Willow Styles. And to know that our kids still feel that way about our teachers, I think that is what makes us do what we do. And that was probably better than any award that Ms. Robinson could have received because nobody had a student felt that way about her. So that's just a glimpse of what's going on at West Bannon. And I appreciate you for giving me the time to share. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Danner. I understand what the concrete leechers might be nostalgic. Uh, we had the same issue with the high school and I personally witnessed several people fall. Uh, effectively they were not seriously injured, but they were injured. Those little concrete leechers did me the honors, so that must look much nicer. Certainly is more safer. Congratulations on all of those accomplishments. That's, uh, sounds like everything is working very nicely with that.
Thank you. Mr. Danner, do we have any public comments?
Uh, no, ma'am.
All right, with that said, then onto item number thirteen, facilities update.
Facilities update, uh, before we get on the slides, uh, back department has a guest that won in five hundred and sixty-two work orders. Sixty-nine first, that's in sixty-minute work. That's, uh, eight point three work orders a day, so you get back to work and, uh, yeah, we're working great. Uh, this is at the middle school, Dr. Hodges and her team reached out. Uh, this is at the fill house. This is not complete. So again, they're going to base some stall, stalls in there, but again, the bathroom, uh, they're going to base some stalls in there. But again, uh, she said, you know, we knew something, washer and dryer has been moved into wardrobe. Washer and dryer was in a bathroom. And, uh, and in that bathroom, uh, we took one of the, uh, took one of the toilets out. Going to make a handicap accessible, uh, putting FRP board up, covering up the handle. Uh, and again, I said I wouldn't do this, but again, Dr. Hodges and the middle school used some of those slugs along the, uh, to put the new flooring in the fill house. And, uh, but again, you know, during all that project and everything, but the bathroom's been, uh, still getting, uh, that. Uh, Glenn Harbison reached out and wanted to know, give a little timeline on, on the stadium project. Let's give you a sort of a somewhat, I guess, I'm pretty ready for this. Well, by the way, Phil, that's the way we purchased the property at the high school. Um, the hundred and fifty four acres and everything, so planning began. Uh, again, the board and the, the system was very fortunate to purchase an additional property that, you know, that, that attached to that other hundred and fifty-six, uh, so again, an additional sixty-six acres. So again, planning again, uh, sort of changed a little bit. It did change, but again, we sort of expanded. Of course, I had to fill that in there. So, uh, but again, you know, phase one of the plan was we had to fix that problem. So, uh, so back in May nineteen, twenty twenty-three, the board approved the stadium grain project. That completed over the summer just prior to the school beginning. And, uh, wait a second. So we have just a couple of pictures there, just as a reminder of what, what that took place. Uh, then, you know, just last, you know, a couple of weeks ago, uh, the board approved the, the ag greenhouse. And then we had groundbreaking there at the ag facility. And, uh, and again, had to put the kids in there, it goes, the, the smiling faces. So again, and then just last week, we had athletic ground, uh, groundbreaking over at the, at the stadium. And, uh, and again, had to put these in there. So what you see there is the pictures of each sport. That's the tennis team, the senior representative, the coach, softball, and, and the senior representatives, the baseball coaches and their senior representatives. And, and again, just to have to put the conceptual drawing up there, uh, had a, had a great meeting, uh, yesterday. Our architect and our, our senior, again, just moving forward. We're getting our airplane next time, but again, very excited what's, what's future is.
Thank you, Mr. Danner. Okay, Mr. Chair, I would report to you is to approve freezer as surplus property. Mr. Danner?
Uh, Dr. Ramsey, uh, is always asking for something, you know. Now he's, he's in stories that, which I completely understand. So, uh, uh, we tossed around several ideas, uh, uh, Mr. Didn't pull right here. The freezer is actually located in the freezer building just below the fill house, close to the Hill West Road. I know y'all, uh, went to building, the building, it's pretty much the same. And inside that building is this freezer. So I went and took some pictures, man, her asset number with the, uh, Ms. Martha, I said, Martha, I need to know everything you have about this, uh, this freezer. So, uh, uh, I will have her and her team, uh, started digging out some, uh, some information. The freezer was actually purchased in October of nineteen eighty-nine. Um, and at first, uh, Martha talked to Candy Sisson. Candy Sisson said, hey, that's before my time, it's going to have to be mismentioned. So at the teacher of the year banquet, Ms. Pixel was there. So I, I missed mention, when did that take place? She said, hey, that was before my time. So this was prior to that. So we had purchased in eighty-nine, was taken off of actual inventory in two thousand and two. So again, that freezer just sitting down there. So I got the maintenance coming over, I got, uh, Mr. Farthing over. I said, Mike, can we use this thing? And, and, uh, they just sort of gave me that look. And I said, we just need to get rid of it. He said, well, no, wait a minute. And we had a couple of maintenance guys there who, uh, who locked them up. And they said, hey, you might, you might get something out of that. These people have these places in Kentucky and whatever. So, uh, so, uh, even though it's not been used in over twenty years, um, number one, we need the space. So I'm requesting that we, we declare this surplus, could have got to bid. The advertising's in there, we follow all of our policies. And, uh, uh, we will start this immediately, we'll put this on the website, uh, if approved, uh, as early as tomorrow. And then, uh, hopefully in November, we'll come back with some sort of, of offer from the community. Uh, if we don't get any offers on the community, we might declare it salvage. So we can get rid of that information or get rid of that area, get it cleaned up, turned over to the high school and shut things up for at least two weeks.
Minutes.
Minutes, in a couple of weeks.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make your, um, recommendation to approve this presentation, please.
All right, yeah, recommendation to approve freezer surplus property, do I hear motion?
So, ma'am.
And second. Second, motion second in discussion. All is in favor, don't you have, so motion approved.
Next item on the did is to approve to extend the property manager degree. Mr. Danner?
Uh, yes, ma'am, in twenty-one, again, you know, we come to you to have somebody, uh, we actually put this out to, to the public. Uh, we had some people, uh, make requests to be higher property manager. So again, that was approved back in twenty-one, ice cream review, uh, I see the board is going to review. It's time for another review. So I would like to continue to review to the property manager, which is Jeff Corning, who has done an absolute tremendous job keeping up with the property. And, uh, and, and doing anything we ask him to, to help us out in the future.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve this present, please.
Very well, your recommendation, do I hear motion?
Make that motion.
And a second.
Second.
Motion second in this session. All is in favor, don't you have, so motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Danner. Mr. Chair, item number sixteen is to approve Mr. Financial Report in this win. You will come and make your presentation, please, you.
Thank you, that is superintendent's word. And so what we have here tonight, I have where we are final report for June twenty twenty-three. So this is everything that we have sent and submitted to the state of Georgia and signed off. So that's our general fund, so it has all of our rules on there. And then we have our capital projects. And then our special revenue. And I do want to point out our schools, they have approved their quarterly financial report every quarter, are not required to have budgets. So folks, all of those revenues, we expenditures, not have budgets because they don't have to adopt those budgets. So that's why if you look at this report, um, the budget numbers, we're standing just for the year because all of those entries for revenues and expenditures are included in this, uh, special revenue report because that also included in the state's numbers.
That is our year-end report finalized.
And the finalized that we signed off with the O B, um, for the year. And then that is our school expenditures for our special, um, school nutrition for the year. And now we have our office documents where we're sixteen point six six, we're standing complete for this year. Our, um, general fund, revenues and expenditures. And our capital projects. Our special revenue. And our school nutrition. And that presents our statements for this month.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve this present, please, sir.
We have a recommendation to approve financial report as presented, do I hear motion? You have a motion, and a second.
Second.
Motion second in this session. I would like to say thank you again for the updated format, it is much, much easier to read.
Thank you. I, I have, the messages are very valuable, I think I went through them right.
You're good. All is in favor, the votes unanimous, the report is, is approved. I'd also like to mention that, uh, students can read that story on the screen, that information is available on our website. So if you want to go back and take the picture off, please.
Thank you, sir. Item number seventeen, this was that day, this win?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we have for this month, we received eight hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars in any one debt in September for the month of sales in August. That's four point seven percent growth. Then we collected twenty-three point eight nine nine million, that was lost. We have ten point six million left. And if the average collections continue, we will max out in September twenty-two.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the intended is personnel. And I'll give her the Friday afternoon access to the personnel sheet. Anyone not ready? All righty. We have two recommendations this month. The first one is Mary Ann Walker, effective ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Chair, make a recommendation.
Do I have a recommendation, do I hear motion?
So, second.
Motion second, all is in favor, don't you have, so motion chairs.
Thank you. Next recommendation is Cecily Godfrey, effective seven thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. I make that recommendation.
Do I have a recommendation, do I hear motion?
So, ma'am.
And a second, second, motion second, all is in favor, don't you have, so motion chairs.
Thank you. Next recommended, uh, our recommendations, committed completion of paperwork, background check and training requirements. And if there's no objection, I'd like to take the first two together. That is Linda Burgess for a classified position. And Whitney Stanley for a classified position, both effective ten sixteen, twenty twenty-three. The assignment for Linda Burgess will be for West Bannon bookkeeper. And the assignment for Whitney Stanley will be East Bannon career pro. Mr. Chair, I make that recommendation.
We have a recommendation, do I hear motion?
So, ma'am.
And a second.
Second.
Motion second, all is in favor, the votes unanimous, so motion is approved.
Thank you. And the next recommendation is also committed completion of paperwork, background check and training requirements. And, um, this is for Karen Flom for a classified position, effective eleven one, twenty twenty-three. This is actually transferring her, um, current assignment from school nutrition to West Bannon career professional. Mr. Chair, make that recommendation.
We have a recommendation, do I hear motion?
So, ma'am.
Second, second, all is in favor, don't you have, so motion is approved.
Thank you, sir. And the next recommendation is for substitute employee, committed completion of paperwork, background check and training requirements. And that's for I C B N Ingram for substitute, effective ten sixteen, twenty twenty-three. Her assignment will be school nutrition. Mr. Chair, make that recommendation.
We have a recommendation, do I hear motion?
So, ma'am. Second.
Motion second, all is in favor, don't you have, so motion is approved.
Thank you. That concludes our personnel list. For this month. Mr. Chair, superintendent comments. And there's so much to comment on, there's, um, when I sit and reflect on what happens between one board meeting to the next, I'm always amazed at all the work that everyone does. And like Ms. Danner said, that work starts and ends and concludes and culminates with the teachers. Um, but we've had an exciting month. We've had the teacher of the year banquet and like, um, Ms. Danner said, Ms. Katie Robinson is our Fannie County School System Teacher of the Year. Very, um, proud of her and all of our teachers, so I want to congratulate her. Ms. Addison, I thank you for your presentation and for all that you're doing and leading at West Bannon. The groundwork, you know, like Mr. Danner talked about, with a new athletic complex. That's going to be the start of war history. We've talked about a lot of history tonight, twenty-five years that funded, um, so not only can we look back, but we're initiating history. Um, the coaches, um, that were at the groundwork and the students, um, our athletic director, our principal, community members, it was all appreciated. Homecoming week. Now I talked about something that worried me out. We had a homecoming parade for the downtown school, it was so much fun. Homecoming court, um, I thought so bad I did sprinkle rain on the girls until right about halfway through. But they looked beautiful and it was such a wonderful, and homecoming dance. It was pre-k week, so we got the one end of the spectrum to the other pre-k week where we celebrated literacy and early learning. Um, we were able to go read to the little ones and, um, there's a couple of directors that I won't necessarily point out, but I don't think they had classroom management of four-year-olds because they came back and told me how their book was stolen from them by a four-year-old. And then they went and wrote on it and they had to sort of radio it up, knock it up. And back to school bus, Mr. Isley, thank you for bringing that back and that is appreciated. Um, Avenue Fair. And I know I'm missing something, that's just in class four meeting. Um, in addition to the leaders in our school, um, in what our leaders do for our school, we have two team members with us here tonight that have actually been asked to lead on state level initiative. So we not only have leaders for our Fannie County School System, but they've been recognized by the state. Dr. Linus Reef was, um, asked to serve on a discussion panel at the State Board of Education. Um, to the Department of Education for, and to participate on the CTA E, CTA E strategic plan in workforce development across the state. That's a huge honor. Dr. Reef, thank you for taking your expertise and helping the rest of the state. Dr. Ramsey, I'm very proud of you. You were selected as a member of the Board of Directors for the Georgia Association of Secondary School Principals. That's a huge honor and it's a very important state organization. You were also asked to mentor aspiring principals and to be a member of that program and to serve on that committee. And, um, that's a huge honor when you're selected from the whole state to help others grow. So proud of you. We're blessed to live in Fannie County.
Amen.
Mr. Danner, Dr. Reef and I have been going to talk to different civic organizations and we've been having an opportunity to tell our story and talk with people. And, um, we say the community is wonderful, but we've experienced the community is wonderful. We have been welcomed, um, embraced, people have asked for opportunities about letting me involved in the school. Before the next board meeting, there'll be an election. Um, early voting starts October sixteenth. Election day is number seven. And the force on that ballot is our referendum for East Post Six. So we encourage each of you to exercise your right to vote. A lot of people pay a very high price in this country just to give you the opportunity to go have a voice. So I encourage each of you, regardless of whether I agree with your voice or not, I want you to go exercise your right to vote. We also have someone with us tonight that is very big to the community. And over the past couple of months, it's been very nice to see different people in our school system reach out to this person and even though they're not hired by us, they're still part of the family. So with that said, Ms. Laura Lee, I would like to request that you would come to the front that we have a token of our appreciation from you being a part of the Fannie County Community family. So you move your board. Boarding the program. Ms. Laura Lee, you have shown your kindness and you have been, you have been with us as much as we've been with each other. And you go on out of your way and make sure that information is correct. And so on behalf of Fannie County School System, you. Now you can tell us for a second. And Mr. Chair, with that and the words of one of our bus drivers, I'm done.
Very well. Kelly, you want to start us off tonight?
Sure. We say thank you to everybody that's here and that's over there watching. We appreciate you, I think. Thank you very much. One day, Matt, I'm just trying to cut a beat. We say very well, very good, Mr. Thomas. Very good, Mr. Dinger.
Good, very good. You did great. Of course, you have Lucas's head, so.
I'm bored of him.
Oh, okay, yeah. Just saying a great job in your presentation, which she's had. Why she hadn't, I almost said congratulations to you, Dr. Ramsey. That's a new kind of, I just found out that that's awesome, so congratulations. Want to say it was a wonderful, wonderful day of groundbreaking, all the hard work that, uh, that your team and everybody's done to get to that point. It's been amazing. I'm super excited about the future of that. And we get to see the property come, you know, all around us, us get to use it. So that's been a great, great thing for me here in Nashville. I do appreciate you. Each and one of you got a lot of happiness and love you. So thank you. God bless you.
It's hard to follow Ms. Miller. She touched on everything. But anyhow, I thoroughly enjoyed our meeting this evening. Really have. Uh, Ms. Collins and, uh, Ms. Danner. I don't know why you're nervous. You're among family. You know, if you make a mistake, we're just like, go on. You know, that's the way it is here. I hope, and I think it is. Mr. Roof, congratulations. I know you do a great job. Uh, Mr. Ramsey, congratulations to you and I know you do a great job too. Congratulations to our, uh, elementary schools on your award. Uh, you deserve it. And I look forward to seeing the middle school get their award, the high school get their award. Uh, I just appreciate everybody being here. Uh, well, no, no, anyhow, I started to tell you something, but I won't. I'll let you find out the hard way. But, uh, I appreciate being up here with these men and, uh, Ms. Collins, I'll tell you. I got to tell you and Mr. Roof, I think I enjoyed your presentation the most that I have enjoyed any presentation lately because, because what it stands for. And that's the children. Getting on their level where they can learn. You can't learn if you're not on level. And you know it for sure. You've been in the school system long enough. You got to get the child's attention, get with them. And I just, this is the best school system in Georgia.
Yeah, again, thank, thank everybody for being out tonight. Um, Ms. Danner, great job. And it was me bringing up, uh, history things because I'm going back in my age, you know, of being on that field. And not that it's a bad thing, it's gone. It's just, I have a lot of memories of being there when there was no football field at the high school. So, uh, so yeah, that's, uh, a lot of good time. And, uh, Ms. Katie Robertson, how, um, proud I am of her to see all the teachers that would be mentors to her or if that's the correct word, that was giving her accolades, knowing that she was gonna, she could be that. And so I'm, I'm, I'm very proud of her. And, uh, the thing that I, I'm seeing lately is, uh, you principals, uh, can tell me if I'm wrong, but student morale is like through the roof. I mean, I've been to the elementary schools, to middle school, to the high school and just our last work session, the two young ladies that I had. You know, I've had students in the past that impressed me, but I had two young ladies that just went over the top. Best, best time I've had with them. And everywhere you go, just morale is, is up. Um, y'all know how much I want vocational, that's what I call it. That STEM building up there to be productive, but I see so much excitement in those rooms when I go in there. There's, those kids are so excited. So I think it's, it's at a high level. And, um, I see the band, you know, it's not as big as it was when, when I was in high school. But look at all the, uh, extra acti- after school activities that we have that are going on, that so many kids are involved with. Cause, uh, and it's running, um, so efficiently that, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm just grateful for all the, the things that they have available to them and, uh, to see them excited about it. And, uh, it's just, uh, I think we, what is it? The best place in this United States of America to live is Blue Ridge, Georgia. And so y'all have a blessed evening and, and thank you for coming up.
Well, they did leave a lot for me to add. But I will, um, add congratulations to our elementary school principals, uh, to Dr. Roof, Dr. Ramsey. Thank you for representing us so very well. Exciting to hear the results of your study and your report tonight, uh, moving forward with our, with our approach to teaching. We know that there is a need for assessment, recognizing all of us to be certain people. So they learn in different ways, in different ways, they're getting to the heart of teaching. So thank you. So excited to hear that thought is moving forward. What was it? Congratulate that, you know, that's graduation, not the right word. Some of the planning is coming through this. Uh, Mr. Danner, you've done an incredible job.
Amen.
And this project is all capital right. This has been years in the maintenance and planning process, the layout. And he's responsible for that and he has done an incredible job. And what you saw with the, the President of United is basically the page one. Basically, it was already on the, in, in, on the plan and ready to go. It will, uh, he is one of the successful, successful, uh, assets of the record, uh, renewing our spots to, to, and we're so very thankful for that. It's allowed us to have the lowest education available in the state of Georgia. We'll go back, uh, for eight years in a row. And we're so very proud of that. And I will tell you that any school system I've talked to in the state of Georgia is very ingenious that they are debt free. And we have this, this opportunities to expand the horizons for our students. It's a blessing and honor to be a part of the Fannie County School System. And, uh, so in order to serve, thank you very much for your attendance tonight. We look forward, um, to seeing you next week. With that, I'll, I'll wish you a very good night.
So, move. Up, up, up.
Alright, me.
By me.
Ms. Miller, uh, just got here. He's going to, y'all might get there because, uh, he's up there. Can we get one more picture with Laura Lee?
Sure.
You want to go ahead in German?
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Okay, we have a second. I need a second. Very well, uh, all is in favor. You standing in German? Yes, we will have that photograph.